...introduction of the board. We're going to first have, uh, introductions by, uh, Councilwoman O'Reilly and then follow up with your allegiance.
About time we had an opportunity as we realize and do well to be a part of this great city. God, I pray that you would touch our hearts and our minds on tonight. I pray that you would help us stay strong, give us the wisdom and knowledge we need to do a great job on tonight. I pray God for understanding for all of us here on tonight. Help us all grow spiritually and help us to trust you more and more every day. And Jesus, I pray to you.
To declare under the United States of America, a considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Ford, did you have a call please?
Turn the mic on.
Here.
Next, we have approval of medicine held on June 13th, 2024. July, July 18th and July 1st. Make your motion. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to make appointment to the civil service board. It says, "Whereas the city council, City of Babelloosa does hereby authorize the mayor to appoint Gregory Gronkewill to the civil service board." I'll make a, uh, I'll make a motion on that. Public participation. May I have an act of public participation to speak on this matter? At this time, I'd like Mr. Gronkewill to step in the voting and introduce himself.
Gregory Gronkewill, age 27, Robert Harvey Street, Babelloosa. I'm here to, to give my time in the service of the civil service board. I wish I could tell you that I have a wealth of, uh, experience, but I don't. Uh, I believe that the civil service... I believe that the civil service, what it does, it regulates the employment of all city personnel. And, uh, what I bring other than experience, I bring reason and integrity and this law. If I am confirmed, I'll do the best that I can.
Do I have anybody else, uh, which could come forward from the public? Any other of the public participation? Mr. DeVries, while you're coming, please state your name and address you represent.
About 11:27 in the day, I just want to say, uh, Mr. Gronkewill, I've been knowing for a long time, basically all my life, and he's always been a person that, you know, would have helped if he came and he stand for the right man. So I think he'll be a great forum to...
Morgan Austin, Senator, took him out there for this whole... I think the choice of Mayor Blake, with, uh, Mr. Gregory Gronkewill, uh, my brother Ethan, Gronkewill, was, you need someone sitting in that position that has some critical thinking skill because of his judgment. You know, he got some right decisions, but I think that he was said that he would listen and observe when they would be done and he would make the right decision.
Okay, great, I'm 10 grand. I just would like to tell you that I think Mr. Gronkewill would be a great person. Served on this board, I've known him 40 to 50 years. He's well respected, always done a good job, everything he's worked at, give a lot of time to the community. Thank you.
This section, may I ask your name?
Keith Merrill, uh, Keith Merrill, out of 25 East Forest Department, 70, Babelloosa, Louisiana. As young people say, I'm not a hero. And the reason I say that is because I have been talking about the civil service board. But Mr. Gray Gronkewill is way more qualified to serve on that board than me. I look up to him as a mentor, man, I'm to his thrill team. So he's a man of compassion and he's also a man of integrity. He's not going to go along with any kind of foolishness. He's not going to take up the folk just because I've been knowing you like Coach and Dog and his sons, grandson and all that stuff. So we have the right board. I'm actually, I'm hoping to ask you that the city council will please appoint Mr. Gregory Gronkewill to the civil service board. And I promise you, he will not disappoint Babelloosa.
Uh, you back there, 641 St. Augustine Street? You said that you didn't have a wealth of money or not?
Experience.
Or experience. We're looking for integrity. You have integrity, you deserve this position. And I hope that the council will align you. Integrity is on the ballot. And we need you.
Thank you, fair, I'm asking everyone to be in place. I met Mr. Gronkewill when I personally, uh, Babelloosa, from there all the way to Wisconsin. I became his neighbor. I think he had great intention to do a right thing for the city. I think it'd be a great choice for us. The whole episode, thank you.
All right, that be all. Any council...
I want to thank the public for all those positive comments.
Yes, sir. Any council discussion? I got something to say about you, Mr. Gronkewill. Me and you first met in Plano and Zonan when we were building your apartments down Columbia Street. I would say this ring was very old and he had a lot of patience and I, and that is a quality that needs to be on the civil service board. All right? Any other council discussion?
Yes, I can add a council discussion about Mr. Gronkewill. Uh, I've known him since I moved here to Babelloosa. My family knows him. Uh, I served with him on another, uh, organization, Washington Parish Coalition Human Services. And, uh, the people be, uh, attributed to, uh, to civil service. I believe the people be, uh, fair. And, uh, congratulations on this.
And I would just like to, um, add to everyone, um, expressions of Mr. Gronkewill. Thank you for, um, taking up the time and wanting volunteer to be on any board. Um, and also thank you for being a retired, um, well-working school system, school teacher. So we, we appreciate all your years of dedication and your continuous dedication to help house those here in Babelloosa, especially those who need, um, housing. Um, thank you again, looking forward to, um, your more, um, housing apartments that you're going to be building in the future. And, um, just thank you for all that you do. Thank you for being an outstanding, um, citizen here and giving back and donating time. And he is the beacon at my church. So I thank you for being a man of God, most of all.
Any other council discussion? Secretary Ford, if you have a call please.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Case?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Next, we're going to have introduction ordinances.
In our, some of these, many of ours, number 1685, ours, number 1064, and our number 1416, for our conversation, city council members, even for visiting the city charter not being affected during this administration.
And we have the discussion and our next council meeting, all of us are coming. Next, we've got a, um, I will read the one that's in council on the document that says here. It says, "Ordinances, Establishment Fees and Regulations for the City of Babelloosa Parks and Recreation Department. That will not be discussed until Tuesday, August 1st. I'll be off to public discussion by that time." Next, we've got, uh, ordinance to be read by Councilwoman Case, this is an introduction only.
An ordinance to provide financial statements, resources for the Babelloosa City Council finances to be on a monthly basis. And this will be primarily discussed at the next council meeting. And the, the reason, uh, for this, for this particular ordinance is to ensure that, is to ensure that, uh, we, we have not received a 2022 or 2023, uh, counts and that, from what I understand, from our control, it hibits him to get in our finances. So we do have to, to, uh, to account for our money somehow and some way. And this is, uh, the reason I'm really, really to, uh, discuss it with you.
Next, we've got another ordinance to be read by, um, Councilwoman Smith.
Orders to read, section 10A, ordinance City of Babelloosa Code to provide the operation of mobile food establishments. Food truck or food trailer within the city of Babelloosa to be read more in detail on the next meeting. And this is just adding trailers to, um, so the food establishments that are already in place.
Okay. Next, we have a ordinance to be read by Councilwoman Smith again.
Councilwoman Case?
Councilwoman Case.
An ordinance to amend ordinance, uh, 2097 Division 2, mobile homes, house trailers and non-직접al features, uh, section 21 dash 264. And this is, uh, primarily, um, we, we all know that according to the charter that there are not any mobile homes allowed in City of Babelloosa, however, there's another section within the charter that allows for, for houses of individuals that, that, um, that are exchanging equally out. So, uh, we have some people, they're getting their accounts in place and they're, they're just either swap out and that'll be discussed more in detail at the next city council meeting.
All right, the next one is Councilwoman Case, too.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of Babelloosa, uh, to execute an agreement for, uh, professional services with retail strategy. Uh, this would provide certain professional consulting services, uh, beginning retail academy and related activities in the amount of $25,000. Now, I know with our closeouts, it's really that we cannot enter into contracts, however, the legislative auditors have sent information which I will be sharing with the council on ways we can, uh, do contracts. We would have to spend out our own budget in order to, uh, being with these, these contracts. And, uh, this particular, this typical company has been in, in place for at least, uh, 30 years. And I'll give more detail about retail, uh, strategies. We had an economic development meeting on it, it was a really good meeting that we had, but, uh, we discuss more in detail at our next, uh, meeting. And we're going to do everything we can to invite them to our next council meeting.
The next one is an ordinance to be read by Councilwoman Temple.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with SRI Professional Service. An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with SRI Professional Services to assist with delinquent tax title sale process.
All right, at this time, we do have another introduction only, um, on the, for the agenda. So we're going to have to amend the agenda. And what if this is amended, is there's going to be a ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into, um, a lease agreement with North Shore Charter School? Now, that won't be coming up till the next council meeting for public hearing. But we do have to have to amend the agenda tonight to introduce only this tonight. So I make a motion to amend the agenda only.
Sir.
Okay, at this time, do I have roll call?
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President O'Leary?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to read, I'm going to read the introduction only.
Mark?
I'm going to read the introduction only, you say that every council?
Well, but I just didn't have to say that to come to you.
Attorney Maggie Tyler, the legislature know they don't need vote participation.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
They don't need any vote participation to amend the election.
But if they're voting, so you need to figure out what we're not working for the two of us. Because it says that any vote must allow the public participation. Also, that's in the charter, so it says that. And you have the other thing that says that.
And this is?
You figure out the twenty-two. This is trying to, we have to operate by the same rules of all.
The other thing is like all you're telling me and Tate's, Councilwoman Tate's.
Fine, get it right.
I'll bet. By the term, by the time anyway, thank you. All right, I'm going to read that. I'm going to read, thank you. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and read the ordinance, this is introduction only. This will be up for public discussion, you will have your opportunity to discuss it next council, council meeting. Ordinance to, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with North Shore Charter School Incorporated. This will be up for public discussion, August the twentieth. All right, that concludes our, uh, uh, introduction of ordinances. Our next is public hearing, hearings and adoption of ordinances. All right, the next one is the ordinance from myself. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a labor agreement between the city of Bubalooza and Mycon Services. This is in a, I'm going to write. Says the ordinance, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a labor agreement between the city of Bubalooza and Mycon Services Incorporated. Says to be ordained that the city council identify and authorize the mayor to enter into a labor agreement between the city of Bubalooza and Mycon Services Incorporated to repair the installation of sewer pumps. Therefore, therefore, it be ordained that the mayor has declared installation of labor to repair the sewer pump on the Bonanza Street Station three in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-three cents. Now, this, what we're doing here tonight, this was as of emergency ordinance that was voted on by the council back in June the fourth. We're changing it into a regular ordinance tonight. So at this time, I make a motion that we go ahead and do that. And do I have a second? All right, now public participation. Anybody in the public wish to ask any questions about this?
More than us, so thirty-six thousand, I think, Bubalooza. Uh, excuse me, I agree with this agreement because I think this company is a local contract. Uh, of the city council, when I saw the council, I was able to get placed in the, uh, state legislature, the policy that any contractor that were coming into the state of Louisiana, city of Bubalooza will have certain percentage of local people. Because every contractor that comes into the city of Bubalooza, they were running on people. And that money is up there. So I stand an agreement tonight that the city would go into, um, agreement with local contract. Because most of those people, some of the workers there are going to be lost, people, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public wish to speak about this matter? All right, I'll move on to council discussion, any council discussion about this matter?
Uh, yes, uh, on the council discussion, I did, we just have to survey a control today that is people concerned about the funding. And he did indicate that, uh, that the funding would be coming from our ward and sewage, uh, account for sixty-three thousand. So we do, I want to make the ordinance available.
Any other council discussion? If they need none, Secretary Forth, we have roll call, please.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President O'Leary?
Aye.
Next, we have a ordinance to be read by, uh, Councilwoman O'Leary.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Bubalooza to enter into a contract to have to redesign the city website.
All right. Do we have a motion? I go ahead and make a motion. Any second? One minute, please. Any second? Do you not have a second? This is to redesign the city website. This is in the back of your, y'all need a second, but you're there.
Uh, I believe the second is that we have a question, uh, who's that hearing?
All right, this time, we will have, we have our public participation, Mr. Chris, is this?
Good evening, council, I'd like to just give a little context on the, uh, contract here. So a little over here ago, the city decided that it would be important to go ahead and kind of look at the way that we're disseminating information to the public. Uh, at that time, we would put out a RPF or RP for website design, which we got about three, um, proposals. Not considering one, uh, the council actually voted on it about a year ago, um, in the past. This is just kind of bringing it up just to, um, like the time we didn't, um, act on that contract. And so at this time, we're ready to move forward. So there's been a little bit of a price change. Uh, so this would just be kind of updated in a process.
What was the price?
Of course you should add.
Um, what was the price, please, the difference from proud to now?
Let's see, so we look at page eighty, um, has your one-time upfront cost of fifteen thousand dollars. That has not changed. Um, it was actually, I believe it was the lowest of the RPs. And then the annual price went from seventy-five hundred to eight thousand and thirty-four dollars and thirty cents. And that's on page eight.
Uh-uh, I don't have a page there. It's a what?
Eight, eight, oh, it actually has the cost, which I put.
The cost is, the overall cost is basically, uh?
Now, now the appropriation, the current appropriation for fifteen thousand dollars to redo it is in the ordinance. So we knew about that. And then we got a recurring annual fee of eight, eight thousand and thirty-four dollars and thirty cents. That's what we will be paying on board.
Okay, well, me and Miss Temple don't have a page, um, here, seven nine.
Well, apologize, I believe it's, it's a benefit, uh, the, which is in, I, I, I.
It's not in this conference.
I mean, the, uh, this, that.
The color college should have, they, they, I'm sitting here looking at two thousand.
Yeah, they may have it, we don't have it, but that's fine.
I see that, I'm just saying, this should be shared with you all.
Yeah.
I have a page.
Thank you.
Not over the long, the face, the long, the face.
Yeah, I have a question, where is some money coming from out of the budget? What department?
I don't know. Give us that information.
My call is closer.
This is a service contract that will come from professional, real services.
That's what you got.
Now, there's some important data on the current site. Like say, for instance, our, some of our city ordinances and all her, and those, we have to retain copies of those. In order to keep from re-scanning and uploading the second years to do that, is, will that be, will the new company be able to back up and upload that to the new website?
I believe so, um, when we spoke with them, I looked through, there is, uh, integration in that sense. Um, also, I believe that was one of the reasons why we did look into, um, kind of doing this. Cause I tried to look for the past ordinance on the website, actually wasn't up there, I couldn't find anything in twenty twenty-four, it's all coming up there. So that's one of the reasons why we trying to get a new website, so we can have things like that actually work better in the future.
Right, and this also includes, uh, a phone app as well. So you'll be able to send out push notifications, hey, the hurricane is coming next week, come get sandbags from city hall, start at three o'clock today. This is a way for us to push out more communication. The council will have access to the website in terms of, um, each council person will have a blog page where you can post updates through your district. Um, I, if this passes, the city departments will be mandated to update, um, the website once a week with things going on in their departments. This is just a way to get more information out there, um, to the citizens. Right now, our current contract, um, contract website provider provides, it's really just a stopgap company. Um, a lot of cities don't use it, that used to use it, it's very complicated, very hard to use. I would consider myself pretty good with technology, but I can't get the hang of it. So that's why the city website has not been updated. And I mean, moving forward, it's going to stay in that state because we can't, we don't know how to operate. This is very user-friendly and, you know, so to get more information.
I would, I would.
Space on that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we do currently, um, hey, uh, I'm unsure on the exact date.
Once, uh, if the, um, ordinance is passed, how long will it take them to put up their website?
I believe that's, well, I believe the timeframe is about ninety days to get it off. Uh, as the mayor was saying, this is really, very, very user-friendly. I mean, to be able to have it easy enough for each individual department to update their own website is very important. And I think it's very crucial to let the city know what they're doing. Um, also, I was just talking with a few constituents in the, in the crowd about how they don't really know how to get information in terms of like mental health services. Or like community services like that, um, even the agencies are posting that information themselves. So they have a very central place to do that. I think this website would be a great, great way to get that done.
My tip of the question is, uh, where are they currently located at?
I want to say their company is in, so like city of Utah, Chicago, city of Utah, Arkansas.
So they are a national, um, company and they're president of the LME, this ordinance and the LME, um, they were used at all.
So they have navigation system through, middle Arkansas, okay. And also I see where it stated some of this information was just handed to us, that it will be able to, oh, it's friendly user for other cities, cities to share our events and things that are going on in Bubalooza. So that's a good thing too, because that would bring in more revenue for us as well, okay.
Especially with that app, um, anybody who has a download, we can send push notifications to say, hey, right, council meeting tonight at five thirty, please come. Or we have an event at city hall, anything, really.
Okay, and also let me ask you this question, um, business owners or party planners, eventers, or will they be able to go in here and access to, um, download their events as well?
I believe that we can make that possible. And I, I, that's one of the things that, um, between private communities and other, we would like to do. I think that would be great, like, uh, online, everybody can let everybody know what's going on. Of course, we have to go through a filter so that we can approve and whatnot, but it would be great to have a community calendar like that. And I think that's something that we're going to push for.
Okay, because I see website calendar for functions on there. And that, that's another way to get information out to let, um, people across know that we are having things going on positively and positive events here inside the state.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, one other question, you mentioned that the price has may have changed a bit. Now, I do see initially it was this fifteen thousand dollar upturn. And then there's, uh, cast from earlier mentioned, eight thousand, uh, thirty-four dollars and thirty cent will be, so has those numbers changed?
Yes, ma'am, it was about, uh, five hundred dollars since last summer. So it was originally the, um, the original annual cost was seventy-five hundred, now it's eight thousand thirty-four.
Eight thousand thirty-four?
So about five hundred and thirty-four dollars changed.
I have another question, how long is the contract for?
I think these contracts can be looked at in.
So we're pre-refered each year?
So we're really not locked in, it's just by annual debases. But one time upfront, fifteen thousand, and then annually about eight thousand. And if you want to keep dealing for next year, we just fill another, this like, so it's not like you're locked into a contract with them.
No, no.
So they can, any, uh, so by the line of not locking up your, like, uh, website lease agreement or anything, make a technical raise that eight thousand dollars at any time. About eight thousand and thirty-four dollars. Right, and that's the industry standard, um, so the council board is asking how long our current contract is really just a clause, either sixty or ninety-eight clause. And either side can terminate the agreement at any time, so it continues on. And so, um, and also, I guess for eight thousand a month, I guess you can call them for technical support.
A year. A year. And yes, and have unlimited support, and it's a very, very friendly user, I guess, so, very efficient.
Actually, I, I pay on a, a monthly double, ten, so somebody could support.
I'm going to be talking about, uh, this, uh, case, the data migration. You look on the council page, it does say, um, in the uptime, the up, the one-time upfront cost, um, it does include the data migration with unlimited, uh, pages and documents.
So I think that to recoup fifteen thousand to the size, and eight thousand, about eight thousand and thirty-four dollars annual.
Follow the makeshift, correct?
No. It's part of year two on board.
All right, correct.
How much work?
Correct.
All right, at this time, uh, any public participation that wish to ask Mr. Chris, is this the, or the mayor, questions about average at this time? Please come forward and say your name directly.
Debbie McCloud, four four two Mississippi Avenue. I know your question, I just wanted to say that we need a new website desperately. And we need a better way to communicate with constituents. And I think that this is a winner all the way around every which way, and you said at this point, you just think that this was something that we need, you know, to print for variable price.
Lord, welcome six twenty, you mean, uh, okay, this new app, do you give to access your own map or? Because our review issue comes up, you just have to call and ask kind of job, so.
Right, so we have not, um, it asks the capability, but we have not discussed internally at City Hall, um, if that's the route we wanna go right now. I'm, I'm one hundred percent open to it, but we just haven't discussed it in relation to the website.
Any other public participation? All right, if we no public participation, council discussion.
I just have one other question from Mr., um, you will be ADA trained to navigate the website? Someone has to have training on it.
Yes, ma'am, I'm fairly certain that that will, that will be with us every step of the way to get this done.
My whole council discussion, that wants to be, uh, to get you out as far as the fund groups to fund it out. And what I understand is we're cutting out of our rent lease fund account for the month, the yearly, as well as the initial, uh, salary up.
Okay, any other council discussion about this, or if there be none, Secretary Ford, roll call please.
That's one, Ms. Lynn. Hi. That's one, Kate. Hi. Hi.
Hi. All right, the last ordinance we're gonna read, uh, on the bottom of here tonight, that order. A ordinance authorized by the mayor of the City of Bubalusa to enter into a master engineering services agreement between the City of Bubalusa and Professional Engineering Consultants Corporation, turn of paper, and taxiway rehabilitation. All right, uh, this was actually something that was voted on in the convention too. Yeah, same thing, to bring everybody to speed, this was voted on back in, what, June? June the fourth, June the fourth, it's done as a emergency ordinance. Charter requires us to make our regular ordinance. So we already once had public participation on it, and we'll have to add it again. All right, so I'll make a, I'll make a, um, motion. Do I have a second? All right, now public participation on this, about this, uh, record. This is, uh, authorized by the mayor of the City of Bubalusa to enter into a master engineering services agreement between the, uh, City of Bubalusa and Professional Engineering Consultants Corporation. B E C does a lot of work for us, for grant wise and stuff. So, any other public participation? All right, if we no public participation, any council discussion?
No, I, I did speak with, uh, P E C, uh, to go about it. And, uh, they, they, they needed to pay me, uh, so, uh, this is what I asked. So, uh, I was gonna send some additional information.
All right, any other council discussion? If we no council discussion, Secretary Ford, roll call please.
Ms. Lynn. Aye. What do you think? Aye. That's another one.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simpson? Aye.
Aye. All right, that concludes our business portion of the council meeting. Uh, this time we're moving on over to, um, public participation. First name we have on this is Mr. Brad Grumfield. Mr. Grumfield, as you approach the podium, do you have, uh, two minutes? And please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Brad Grumfield, eight twenty-seven, Robertville, East Street. I wanted to bring litter to the forefront. I believe we have a litter ordinance, and, uh, I think we're valuing, you would agree, that it's important that we, uh, keep the city clean. Now, when I say the city, I'm talking about our, on my street, it's the poor. Sometime I get to the street and go down there and pick up litter and stuff. I know it's a problem, I don't expect anybody to have a police to guard litter twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a week. But I think we can be more cognitively, become aware of the police, uh, going around and patrolling. And I don't know, maybe, once a month, if we had, uh, an unmarked car going in those hotspots. Because I, I just believe that if a few people start receiving citations and it gets out that the city is wanting to do something about litter, uh, I think, that's a change that's worth having. Uh, we never know who's gonna come into this city and want to do business. We never know what port they're gonna come in. Uh, and, uh, all I'm saying is, I believe cleanliness, as we say this, makes the gardenness. And, uh, I think having the city, uh, making a, an extra effort just to have the policemen supply their gardeners to look around. Uh, maybe, I don't know, I'm not telling the overall of the city, but once, once a month, in those hotspots, you know, we designate the hotspots and look at them and start issuing citations, I think it would make a difference.
Thank you, Mr. Grumfield. Next we have Ms. Gladys Langton. Ms. Langton, um, as you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. Two minutes, starting after seven, name and address for the record.
Mrs. Gladys Langton, nineteen fifteen, Rosewood, Carolina. My concern is, um, my question is, who, who's over the cemetery blocks? Who sells blocks, or who's over the blocks?
The citizens, of course, actually, all of them, that one.
What I'm saying, who sells it, who sells the blocks?
The city does.
Okay, um, I have two blocks that I can't find. And I need somebody's replica to go out there and help me find them. I do have the deeds.
Okay, um, Ms. Hines is here, um, you definitely can, um, meet with her and she'd be more than happy to do that.
Cause I do have a deeds.
Okay, yes.
And I've heard that some blocks have been sold from people, under people. They've bought, they go out to, they have bought to bury somebody and it's, it's sold. So I don't, um, have to done some money.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so I must see, it's, it's time, it's science.
Yeah.
Because I really need to, to get that done. But because recently, I said that I couldn't find two, like, these, the two boxes I have, I had to go to box four at the time when my husband died. I had to buy two more blocks on another end. And I'm thinking my other blocks are on this end, but I need to find them. And I need somebody to help me find them so I can take them out. And, um, also, I'm still concerned about cemetery, it is horrible. Bubalusa Cemetery, it is horrible. Being like I said before, we still have open graves that need to be redone. We have graves, we might have grave, like I said, we might have grave here. Instead of being another man here, it's sitting right here. You can't walk through there, you can't, you have to step on somebody's grave to get to another grave. And that's, that's not right. That's because somebody has not been lining them up correctly when they, when it's time to bury somebody. They just say, well, put them here, put them here. And, and, and the, the blocks, plots being sold incorrectly. You, the plotter is supposed to be lined up, just like this family here. It's supposed to be lined up. And you're supposed to have a walkway through each row of graves. And you have to step on somebody to get to the next grave. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langton. Next we have Ms. Barbara Harrow. Ms. Harrow, as you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record.
Barbara Harrow, sixteen oh one Sullivan Drive. Okay, you can just write it down, Avenue Evans, and I think this is for the streets and courts. And children walking home from school, they have to step in knee-high grass and snakes are crawling. Don't have sidewalks and roads, so roadside needs to be mowed. Cause that's the only way the people can walk, is on the roadside. You step on snake, they're gonna have to run in the road. So they need to be able to see their feet when they're walking in. I know the city got ride codes, but I don't know where they are. All the corners and the roadside that gets overrun. From Sullivan Drive all the way back to, well, it's the north side of town, it's a mess. And please, if the workers not doing their job, that means the supervisors not doing this job. So let's get Bubalusa clean, that's our, we do, we're the city, the only city in Washington, that's the worst, that's the town that we use. Let's get it cleaned up.
Next we have Ms. Debbie McCloud.
Okay.
Okay, um, next we have Ms. Sabette Preston. Ms. Preston, as you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. I do state your name and address, the record, two minutes will start.
Sabette Preston, six forty-one St. Augustine Street, Bubalusa. I don't know why we got this big, big book. But as I'm scanning through it, I'm noticing where the city council president is asking for a raise, the city council members are asking for raises. And we can pay for five hundred dollars for a, uh, a more friendly, user-friendly website? Why would we wanna give the city council a raise? You guys are here during the mismanagement here. What makes you think you're entitled to a raise? No, no raises for anybody in this council until they start working for the community.
Now, before the next person comes, before the next person comes, that discussion, even if it's passed, won't take effect until January first, twenty twenty-seven. So you'll have the opportunity to vote on council and mayor at that time. All right, moving along, moving along. Um, my, Mr. Marvin Austin Singer. Mr. Austin, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Marvin Austin, fellow to six forty-seven, well, we, 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 we took a western, uh, my first, uh, we brought something else. Uh, I've sit there, eight years, three hundred fifty dollars. I, I had a private job over at the State Station. I had understanding supervisor. He said, let me just flock out, come to council, drive back over there, come with me, and make my. When the council, the council, it's a short time, it's not a short time, yeah. People call you all day, night, not gonna do it. Bring in this situation, it's not even council later. Uh, as I said, uh, the raise would make a big difference to the race count. Uh, that kind of one, when I was growing up, I was trying to get ready for the next council. Political internet, they were more against me because I brought up. I did roster, I ran a represent, Michael Young. And Mr. Grumfield was saying about the litter and conditions of the street. I don't thought, I was first in that field because of the neglect that's gone on for years. Each night street that even Grumfield was talking about is the first street. It was in, because this is the end now. It was the first street in nineteen seventy that we had over there. The last street, and it's still out there over there, is on Florence Avenue and the four hundred block. Grumfield, all the four hundred, that's the first street in Bubalusa. The section of Florence Avenue on Bubalusa. Because nothing great's happening, they haven't done anything about it. I wouldn't do it because if I got mine, or somebody else's line, they're gonna say, I was just looking out for myself. And we still haven't done, and, uh, we need to go over the program that's gonna bring out a city vacant compliance that over there in the street, thank you.
And for that, Mr. Austin, the partial, partial, it was done, they just didn't go all the way down and complete it.
Right.
No, but not now, it's a serious one.
Yeah, they, they, they stopped it right there to the end when they should have carried it all the way home.
Mr. Miller, would you like to speak? That's your name, it's got a cross to it.
I'm a class of the ninth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Reverend Keith Merrill, what's your name? You'll have two minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
Keith Merrill, two thousand five hundred and forty, seventy. First thing, uh, I want to address about the council, you know, getting extra or whatever. That, I would have to agree with that. Because eight hundred dollars is no money. You get more money now on SSI, trust me, I know. So, so, eight hundred dollars is no money for work. So, you, you know, so I can agree with that. But I would ask the council to please, please earn eight hundred dollars. Because we know we run for office that we're gonna do a whole lot more than, uh, what we get paid for. That's what ain't a job if you really care about the job. So, I do agree with that, let's give the council whatever they need to work with. Cause a lot of times, that's why people don't run for office, or they say people steal and do all that because they're not keeping all the pay for nothing. Cause that's no excuse for stealing, but let's make it worth the people's life. And let's give the people the financial tools that they need to work with. Cause a lot of the council members, uh, have came out of their pocket. I'm not saying nobody will feel that, but I know some of them feel that. And some might not have, but, uh, some have came out of their pockets to do certain things for people. It takes money to do that. You can't just, uh, call down money from him and it's gonna come. My second thing, uh, Mr. Patterson. Uh, if you would, I need your help on the street, Reverend.
Where you at?
It's, um, it's Warren Street and Redwood. Warren and Redwood.
What is?
I just wanna take a look at it, cause it's in, uh, bad condition.
I'll look at it.
Uh, five holes and everything, it's just awful.
I'll look at it more.
And also, Mr. Patterson, uh, the bushes need to be cut behind, behind fifteen twenty-seven Warren Street. Fifteen twenty-seven Warren Street, the bushes need to be cut.
I'll look at it more.
Okay, all right. So let's all work together and not just bash, you know, the, oh, it's gonna be.
Thank you, Reverend Merrill. Next we have Mr. Richard Brister. Mr. Brister, as you place, uh, section name and address for the record. I can state your name and address, two minutes will start.
Richard Brister, nineteen thirty-two, New Wick Street. I'd like to say to the mayor, uh, hope that you, uh, you and councilmen are working a whole lot better now. But I do wanna say a quick thing about, you know, administration. Most of the time, people come up here, they're looking at the councilmen, and I'm not trying to take up, like, the councilman. But now, you kind of all have a catch. And so, I was advised to take you shopping personally, but I, I, I sat outside tonight. You have a sign now, now, I worked with this city for twenty-eight years, I retired. You have a sign that says, don't go down there, in that gate, and no exception to the group. And so, and it couldn't see where, where I was, it's been twenty-eight years, what, did he go down there? If I decided to go down there?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory if you said no exceptions.
Okay, that's all, that's all, that's all I just wanna know. Now, if somebody like me, that dedicated my life for twenty-eight years, came for it out of here, which I don't know if that would end, like, just to see how it ended up. Well, how do you get a red flag, a red flag, come on, man? Trust me, all these, in the, in the office, I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm sorry. But after somebody can to you, is always coming out of office. Other people seen it, I seen it, how can, how can, you, that, or whoever can to you, but can't call his name?
is in the city truck, ain't got nobody in the city truck here, especially on the sun, the morning, your captain, Johnny by Navy. I take it very offensive of that. I worked with a guy that retired from the city, with his head, his black sign up in the street. He wanted to come and go in that building, because he thought it was open. All of a sudden, somebody that's really king to you, come out of the building, got, come out of the, out of the building, get ready to, get ready to, well, I don't have a lot to say.
I need to say goodbye, baby.
Yeah, you better shut your mouth, man.
Hey. You're so bad, bye, go through with that.
Thank you. Listen, guys, we're trying to calm all that down, and we're trying to do decent business, okay?
I'm not a man.
All right. Next, we have, uh, next we have Mr. Jamal Mosley. Mr. Mosley, uh, I see you're, this is the first time in here, please state your name and address for the record.
Jamal, two nine five million, Old Moon Road. Well, I came because I wanted to introduce my idea to turn Bogoosa into what I call a self-sufficient city. Especially a city where no money will be used for the residents, while at the same time, uh, we still pay for exports, I mean, we still pay for imports with the money we make from exports and people visiting the city. I, I have everything rolled up, but better not explain it, can I show, can I show them all y'all at the meeting?
Yeah, if you can show us, I can, yes.
All right.
Yeah, just present it in paper, so we can all look at it, all right? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Next, we have Mr. Thomas Roberts. Mr. Roberts, would you like to come up? Please state your name and address for the record. After you state your name and address, you have two minutes.
Roberts, eleven twenty-seven Avenue J. Well, I just asked to see the Bogoosa to continue to vote. And when somebody come up here with some concerns, if they telling the truth, we need to hear it right. I mean, it's, it's, it's very important that you hear a person out there speaking the truth. We don't want to hear no lies, we don't want to hear what you think and what you heard, we want to hear the truth. Bogoosa is, is really, is, is still eternal. We still, like I said, like I said, city workers, you know, a lot of stuff ain't cut down, a lot of stuff not happened that needs to happen. You know? We gotta work for it, and I see that, I see that's kind of depleted, you know? We don't have skilled workers like we used to out there. That's, that's one reason why things, we don't have the workers that we used to have. Under the new administration, you know, they, they, I guess they went, just started to ransom people off, and they shouldn't have ran off, you know? But, I mean, we, we need to get back to where we can, you know, handle our faves. That's what I'm saying. So that Bogoosa can continue, uh, move forward. That's what I come in for tonight, that's what I come in for every time I come. Everybody need to do their job. And the council ain't getting paid enough, and y'all need to deliver, because just like I said, it's a full-time job. It, it's a full-time job. And we count on y'all. Whether y'all know it or not, we be counting on y'all to do the right thing for Bogoosa. Don't do nothing for me, do it for the city. I don't need no favors from anybody. I just want everybody to do the right thing. The last mayor been liable for almost five thousand, five hundred dollars. Our new mayor liable for a hundred and ninety thousand. I just want everybody to do the right thing. I'm just saying, Bogoosa need to take care of Bogoosa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Now, um, Mr. Charles Worth. I know it's been a while, Mr. Worth, but, uh, please state your name, please state your name and address for the record. And you will have two minutes after you state your name and address.
I'm Charles Worth, I live on eleven forty-one Shore Pottle Street. Please find a chair, if you're close. I would very much like to have our street paved. Originally, was born and raised in Orlando, Florida. Lived in Taff, Florida. When we, me and my wife were first married, oh, fifty-some odd years ago. We moved to Taff, Florida, lived on a dirt street. I went to the meeting, and then finally got the street paved. Here about a month ago, when I was, uh, out by yard, about the, one of the very first times I've seen the policeman come down our street. They don't come down our street at all. Because they don't like that short west A Street. But I really would like to have our street paved. My nephew says, Uncle Charles, this is you dodged a pothole and you hit twelve more. I just spent thirteen hundred dollars, have my, buy my truck rebuilt, because it was torn up. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Charles Worth, to just restate, you said Shore West A Street, correct? Shore West A Street, what we gonna do?
I just put in a... There's a long, the same as the address, what's your address?
I just put in a work order this last night for that, uh, street, called the Pottles.
Okay. Mr. Charles Worth, and he lives at, uh...
Shore West A Street.
How about Mr. Worth?
Shore West.
Mr. Worth. Mr. Worth.
Mr. Worth.
Mr. Worth. The call is right here.
You're very, very aware of that. I'm very aware of that street, it's, it's hidden back there on Shore A.
Shore A.
And I'm definitely gonna do something about it soon. It's the one that goes back to the...
Cost you thirteen hundred dollars just to hear, have my, buy my truck rebuilt?
We, we, we had discussed about it, but I'm very...
The thirteen hundred dollars don't come on a short, when your, thanks to income, it doesn't go away?
Well, I had a discussion with you yesterday, and I...
Oh, I add to it, I'm being about better than you.
Amen, for your service.
Thank you for your service. I would tell you, that thirteen hundred dollars is cheap, to say that probably, and mine was twenty-eight hundred last year. I had to fix mine to the street. All right, um, next I have Mr. Andrew Abada. Mr. Abada, you're gonna have two minutes, starting after you state your name and address.
Go ahead, please, you can...
Okay. Oh, so this is a part of your speech, you're...
Yes, sir.
So the public knows what, where it was being distributed, it's part of his speech that he's presenting to the council, and...
Thank you.
Give this a second, so we can pass out the compliments. One moment before we start. All right, you proceed, please state your name and address for the record.
Andrew Lawrence, sixteen thirty-four, Clayman Road, Bogoosa. I'm the director of Bogoosa Youth Sports, and I'm here today to advocate on behalf of the youth of Bogoosa who participated in our programs, as well as those that may have just been in the future. For context, it's been one year since we have started operating as a five-year-long nonprofit in Good Sand with the State. We've had the opportunity to work with one hundred and seventy different families, of those, one hundred and sixty were Bogoosa resident families. We've been sponsored by eight different Bogoosa businesses, and so far, we've had two successful soccer seasons and just finished our first flight football season. We are a completely volunteer-led organization from the ministries of coaches. And despite all of the good work that we have done, Bogoosa Youth Sports has been met with constant resistance, blatant disrespect, and a refusal of cooperation from this administration. I brought some handouts, I'm gonna move to the council, at first I'd call your attention to the second page of what I had. In and out of, outline our plans for the twenty twenty-four Fall Soccer Season coming up, requesting you to Public City Mall Park at H and B. Where local city non, local non-city rain sourcels have operated for thirty years. I just want to read from the last paragraph. "I think this is a mutually beneficial opportunity for us to utilize a great sports complex here in Bogoosa, as well as the city being able to continue to help provide opportunities for youth in Bogoosa. I am happy to answer any questions or concerns and look forward to hopefully working with you to make this happen for the kids." The mayor's response a day later was as follows. "This request is denied, best, Darned Trump." No information, no questions, no reasoning, nothing. How am I supposed to read this email, other than just blatant disrespect and a disregard for what we are trying to do for the youth of this city? Preventing tax-paying Bogoosa citizens from utilizing the city complex which was made for and exists for youth sports is simply wrong. I think it is a great service to the youth of this city to allow this sort of unprofessional behavior with zero oversight or accountability when it comes to the use of public city properties. I am asking the council and the public, please make your voice heard. These kids deserve better, and we have members of the community volunteering their time and setting up to provide a great service with benefit to youth, they too deserve better. Please use your position to advocate for your respective communities to intervene on our behalf. We are completely legitimate, we are staunch advocates of the youth, and we are committed to creating healthy, fun environments for youth in Bogoosa. Please, let's find a way to make this work soon. Thank you for your time."
If you guys have any questions, you may have to more than that answer.
Um, Andrew, I don't have any questions to ask you, but I would like to just tell you that I commend you for a job well done. And when I go out there to see the kids playing soccer or flag football, I can see black and white. I see kids of the community and parents out there having a great time. And you have been a lot of background work to get the parents involved and volunteers to make sure that the kids are enjoying themselves, having a good time and putting smiles on their face. And I just commend you for coming back to Bogoosa, to your hometown, getting busy, stepping up, and through all these obstacles that you have been going through, to just say, hey, if this field doesn't work, we'll go somewhere else. Because you know that it's not about you, it's about the kids. And being a young adult with no kids, I commend you, so hats off to you. I don't have a lot of money financially, but I will do whatever it takes to try to help you in any way possible. And I will give with you, um, if that's okay, I'm reading to get your number, but I, I commend you, and thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I got to come to the part. I'm just about to say, um, you got a win of your program, especially the soccer program. And with soccer, uh, I know that a lot of our football players, when I spoke with people, for the football players, they get their clunks, and they, and they learn how to kick, and they learn how to maneuver. Uh, I had relatives with, uh, actual, uh, soccer players, uh, soccer, soccer players. So I, I think that's something that can be shared here in the Bogoosa area, uh, the soccer piece of it anyways, and any other piece that you're volunteering your services for, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, I mean, I grew up playing soccer here myself, from, uh, age, age three, uh, all the way up until I still play soccer here in Bogoosa. So I just wanted to bring it back, uh, because I know how much money I have there.
I have a deep question.
Well, I have a question, but, um, I've enjoyed seeing the pictures on Facebook. It seemed like all of the children have been involved, and the parents have been really enthusiastic and pleased with everything that's been happening. I know you're trying to start the Fall Soccer Season, where are you going back to begin?
Uh, we were hoping originally, uh, for mid to late August, um, but, uh, understanding, you know, whatever it takes to make this work, we have to push that back a little bit, and, you know, we're willing to do that. Uh, just hopefully not too, too far back.
I, I want to add, what's this third page, about a hundred and seventy-five?
Uh, well, you know, I, uh, I was originally planning, uh, on discussing it, uh, more or less, uh, the third page, I have there, uh, it's a, uh, it's a Facebook post from the mayor, um, and it's, you know, from the summer, it's talking about all the great things going on in Bogoosa. And one of the things referenced is, uh, sports leagues offering more youth sports, talking about great things going on in Bogoosa. And seeing as how as far as I'm aware, we are the only new sports league to offer new youth sports, uh, in the last year. I just couldn't help, it feels though, number one, like he's praising new youth sports being offered in the area, uh, but at the same time, not willing to, to work with us to help make this happen.
I, I do, uh, kind of echo, uh, Councilwoman, um, Smith said, uh, I applaud for coming back to, um, tribute to Bogoosa and working with the kids, also personally thanking bringing flag football back for half of us. And I hope we can get out of here and turn this block into... I hope I can at least catch me a pass, and I, I'm excited about it, and I think you're doing an amazing job. And I, I believe that some way that we ever work with you to try to be the same as all.
And it is appreciated for what you've tried to attempt to do. And, uh, Mayor, Mayor Charles.
Yes, uh, third is some questions, yes or no, please. Is that your organization attended city events to recruit?
City, uh, attended, or have we hosted booths?
Hosted booths, attended, uh...
Yes, we're, uh...
Did you basically recruit, have you been to our city events to recruit for your organization, yes or no?
I'm limited to yes or no, because this is a corporate, corporate... We, we, we participated in the last year's Back to School Bash, uh, and we participated in this year's Back to School Bash. Although we were, there was some resistance in this year's Back to School Bash, um, but we were able to, to work it out and, uh, and find a way to get out there, even though we weren't on the list until we arrived.
The city has shown that we support your organization.
Initially, when we were...
Were you formerly employed by the city of Bogoosa as the youth representation director?
I was a generation supervisor, I was formerly employed.
And at that time, were there internal plans to expand the city's sports offerings?
Not in a way which I have done.
They were, and ladies and gentlemen, there are always two sides to a story. Bogoosa Youth Sports was born from our administration's part and Redford Park. This guy took the organization when he created a nonprofit, so if we want to get into it, we can get into it. But I'll just inform you like I've informed other people. There are some things that the charter brings strictly to the administration, facility usage being one of them. You can go all around with a mulberry question, come to the mind and try to paint your picture, uh, but at the end of the day, uh, this is squarely within our authority.
Yes.
There, don't, don't make insinuations, you or council members, about this is for the kids, because I can guarantee you, you can take a vote right down, no mayor in the past three or four has done more for the youth of this city than me. That is the main thing that I care about in this city.
Call the vote.
So, so let's, so let's not sit here and act like the mayor is against the kids. The mayor is against people who think they don't have to follow the rules.
I think, but, there were a lot of complaints there.
I think as the president of this council, sir, as the president of the council, I'm going to, to, this, the Mayor Charles has stated his, his statements, and you've stated yours. All right, are any, uh, any other discussion which to cite, Mr. Worth?
Uh, no, sir, thank you all for your time, and like I said, at the end of the day, regardless of the past, we are, here we are now, and I'd like to find a way forward in the best and safest ways.
Thank you. Moving along, uh, next we have Mr. Frank Carroll. Mr. Carroll, as you approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record, you have two minutes.
Frank Carroll, I'm going to get everyone, please. I don't think you council should get a raise. I, I think you all should get together with the judge and the code enforcement officer and the mayor, and get the citizens to clean their property up. That's what I think. Y'all, the budget was closed, and I'm gonna talk about a raise? And, uh, the mayor gonna pay a bill? Like I said, that you all should have paid? And you all paying the bill, you all should? Uh-uh. And you all paying the bill, you all should, uh-uh. Get right. Y'all got to be saying equal justice law? No, stop that in Bogalusa, because there's no equal justice in this Bogalusa. None at all. So let's get, let's get rid of you. And let's get together with this, knock this judge and the code enforcement officer. The code enforcement officer is right people up, but when he come over to the court, they don't do nothing. It's time out. If you're going to pay to do a job, do it. You're not doing your job. You're not making the, the, the judge do what he's supposed to do. So I can see y'all stepping to the plate to be men and ladies and get something accomplished in Bogalusa, and don't rely on the mayor to get anything done, because y'all here asking for a raise. Get busy and do something for the city. Come go over there and, like Mr. Warren you said, ain't nobody paying your business to Bogalusa long or Bogalusa looking where it look. Clean it up. And another thing, I turned a lot of stuff down in 1800 Block D with it. The code enforcement officer came out of there with tickets, but guess what? But the judge didn't clean that. Go down and look at 1800 Block from D, from Solar Drive to, to, to Matt Street. It's a mess. It's ridiculous. Just take a look at it. Look at the property, the houses. Go down that report from Solar Drive to, to, to Plum Street. Grass, just half, two foot half. It's time out. Y'all got to get a raise, huh? Let's get busy and, and get the, get the judge on his job, make him do his job. Okay? They really talk about a raise. One more thing. I like to know, something's going on in, in 1900 Block, uh, uh, that report. I know some of my neighbors had to evacuate their houses. I haven't been able to see him and find out what's going on, but something's going on down there. I, I don't know if the, uh, Seth Pump called him, or I don't know. But I would have been with the mayor and, uh, Mr. Patterson talking about it later.
That's called a turning back. All right. Uh? That's called a turning back. What's speaking? Uh, Joe, well, you're on the, you're on the...
Yes, I was.
So I won't let you...
I sit here...
Police Section Mayor.
I'm sorry, Joe Miller, 532 Alston Street.
Yeah, two minutes.
I sit here and one more second thing tonight at all. But I get damn wrong sitting here and keep on bashing them and figure what he's trying to do, but they just want to bash them every time. And these people that be put up, that come and say things against a man, we council people watching this, and what's being said before we go to crack in our hand. As well as the public, you need to know what's being said before you go out there and hand. One man come in, uh, for no reason, just makes that do a good job, we even set him trying to, and the public works hard. But sitting here wanting to complain about every damn thing, you don't do your own damn job. I'm sorry, thank you.
Who don't do that job? Who are you referring to?
I'm speaking to you. Make it hurt. Something going on in there.
Well, we need to know.
All right.
First of all, and we need to know.
Hey, I can, I told you now. There's no question, because I'm not a cop, I'm not a...
Yes, uh, I just want to...
Hey.
Mayor Trump.
I just want to address a few points, and to keep up the summer guard, litter is an important problem. It's a problem across our state. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with the Lieutenant Governor, and that's one of the things that we plan to discuss. This also relates to, you know, for, everybody talks about, oh, the movie, the movie. Guess what? We had to send up the works out to do a preliminary cleanup, because our city just looks so bad. And then we hold people accountable, oh, the mayor ran everybody off. Then the same people come up here and say, oh, the city workers not doing their job. What you want? You, you have to, you, you want it both ways? You can't have it both ways. Either you want us to hold the, the workers accountable or get the city cleaned up, but, oh, that's my cousin, that's my sister. That's my sister. You see, that, that, those two don't go together. Either you want to hold people accountable or get the things done, or you don't. And then, Mr. Brister, you talking about Bogalusa catch up, which you want to know why? We sit here talking about a score system. We do so much research on the council and this and that, but we haven't researched how to fix the problem. You want to know where I'm at? You want to know just how fast $705,000 in federal earmarks for the city of Bogalusa? But, oh, he's never know where to be found. Oh, I'm in Washington trying to help the situation back.
All right.
You know, I be quiet about a lot of stuff, but have you noticed I haven't been commanding these last few years? Because it ain't worth it. Y'all are going to talk no matter what, and I'm going to continue to do what I do. We want a better city like ours today. When it comes to, oh, we don't want to raise the rates on people. Council, you don't want to raise the rates? But also, council, we want to raise. Where is that coming from? So, the accolades you never have to give in my job, you never have to give. That rate this long is the most it's ever been, because we charging what we are owed as the city of Bogalusa. Y'all been sitting 1980, but I'm not sitting 1980. Moving on, I give you one last talking point, hold up the notice, which will be going out in the, the newspaper soon. It's upcoming Wednesday. Well, yeah, it's Wednesday. The city is announcing its plan to enforce occupational license tax collections, as well as change store licenses, licenses and beer and liquor licenses. Nothing new has been on the books, but we talking about following the law. We got attorneys in, in the city that don't have occupational licenses. We got the city, the city council members with businesses that are not current. Let's discuss the real things here. Y'all not going to sit here and paint one side of the picture, because I got a paintbrush too. City workers did a substantial drop in these selections, and therefore, the city intends to audit suspected non-compliant businesses, which will be sent a notice of intent to see closure of businesses through the city court and given 15 days to comply. It's time to get in order. The stuff is on the books, but people are being held accountable to us on the books. We talked about all the lights so bad, all I could do was write the citation. Half of that is out of my hands. The council creates the codes, I just enforce them. The judge is supposed to hold people accountable. Council, y'all break me over codes about different decisions, but I have been to seeing anybody publicly criticize our judicial rights for their lack of enforcement with code enforcement. Lastly, I'll say this, there is a reason for every decision that is made here in the city office. I don't have time nor do I desire to sit up and discuss every single decision that is made. This is my last time, hold up the call on the city council. Please stop calling my employees, inquire about the operations of the city, trying to direct the operations of the city administration. You talk about the city charter violations, that's clearly in the city charter. You are stepping out of bounds, get back on your side of the field. Y'all have a great night.
Anyone ask for a next question, what's your speed? Is there any number one?
I might, I'll say those. The current amount of the city's public workers, for a year and a half, we've had mental staff, and we're, we're just down to five, six people. We've got over 3,000 workers, when 22 that did 500. I'm very proud of these workers. They work really hard. Where in years past, city workers were known to ride around? You've seen the same car go around the block many times. And that's all I've heard. City workers just ride around. Not these city workers. Myself and James Morris, we're on the play. They go from point A to point B, and they do what they're supposed to do. And talking about, you know, people that we've released, because we're not going to tolerate slackers. Our people, let's not, if you're not on ship, you gotta get off of them. So, because we're, I'm trying to perfect the team, a good spirit point, not have, uh, a bunch of people that just ride and collect the check. So that, that's where we're at with that. While the mayor's trying to perfect, perfect the whole city, being in Washington trying to perfect the workers. So I just want to be part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. All right, uh, I want to move to council discussion at this time. Councilwoman Morris, start with Councilwoman O'Reilly.
Uh, first of all, I want to address the city council raise when I introduce the ordinance. I did some research, um, to cities that's comparable to our cities in population, and this $850 raise still is less than any city that's outside of the city. Uh, second of all, that's fine, uh, the amount of gas a councilperson spends going here, going there, any questions asked? Who going out there with a rival councilperson for fabric, another council for fabric? You know, we don't have a city we have, but we don't have a city gas car. And people call you all the time, and they don't want to talk to you on the phone. They want you to come over, look at it, talk with them, and go ahead and go there. And so, to be honest with you, this not for me, because I would never run the city council today in my life. But the reality is, I listen to you, baby. I listen to you. I mean, y'all are smart as night. I ain't saying nothing you stop. Second, I don't say that right, I'm just telling you truth. The reality is, them little hundred some dollars a month to go through, a, a councilperson to go through, man, please. Nobody's going to do that for a hundred some dollars per week. And, and so to, to criticize like, you know, somebody want to raise, somebody else deserve to raise, the reality is, a hundred some dollars a week does not cover near the cost it takes to just go back and forth doing this particular job. So the reality is, I just think it's way outdated. Somebody said they don't want to be operating the service, because we don't need it. And the reality is, um, you're just, you're just trying to make it decent and fair. Not, not, the other system get a thousand bucks. I just, I just said maybe at least get eight fifty. The other point I want to bring out is, to Mr. Miller, you know, I'm listening to you come up here with all that fanzy and upset about companies just being made. But I, I've never seen that same energy when all the criticism for the city council was coming. You were so quick to defend administration with all your fanzy, all honesty to the meeting, but that's another subject. But the reality is, when it's, when it's attacking the council, you, you, I've never heard you defend the council with that much energy and excitement. Second thing is, Mr. Frager, you love to talk about voting the city council out. Talking about voting the judge out. You don't like what he doing? Say vote him out. You love, y'all love to jump on us, but when it's other people, you don't say nothing, argue the thing. And, and the truth is, if you don't stand for what's right, I'm standing for the cause of war, y'all. I heard about... About the side of the council seat. I get it right. I still think that was talking about, I own the city council. I hear you talking about, I heard I didn't, I just get hold of that with my mouth. So that ain't right what you want. You want to hear the person, all your setup, your setup, my community's ready to act. Third thing is this, when it comes down to, um, this, Andrew Robb, this boy is trying to do some sports sale. The mayor has some genuine, uh, genuine comments, he has some genuine questions. And I understand all those things took place, but all this behind us. And this boy is spending his time over there with them kids, and I'm watching him with them, them kids, society, like the running, playing families out there, the games are packed. You thought it was a big cookout over there last week, how many people's out there? And, and he's doing his show with not a quarter of the money being paid to him. I, I just hope and pray that we can let all that past stuff go, find a way to move it forward, because if we really for the kids, it matters to not to get the credit. So I ain't got to give no credit if I'm ready for a choice. They don't have to get home and make the play. That's the only thing that matters. I'm deeply frustrated with the meeting tonight, because I'm amazed at how people hate the truth. And they only want to support people they feel they like and they get something from. And, and the reality is, it's just serious about Bogalusa. Unless it's be serious about across the board, if we wrong, get on us. If the administration wrong, get on them. It's low light. People, we, we get too caught up in our feelings and our emotions, and the truth is left untainted. That's what you doing now. I, yeah, that's right, but you're again, you disrespecting me, because I been interrupting one time. That's the face I'm talking about. Now, if I had a home, I would go with you, boss, hey, hey, check your mouth, let it right. But none of the people correct people they know was wrong. That's my point. It, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. You said it, talk to me. It doesn't matter. That's fine. My point is, if it comes down to what's right, Mr. Miller, your time is up, man. Your time, I can be up. That's not, I hope you, I think way, I'm gonna be all right. Thank you. Yeah, but you not, because you disrespecting. Again, they play it off, they go, I'll bet you my friend, I'll bet you that, and you go, bro, something going on with it, bro, like it's all wrong. I'm gonna move on, y'all be fine. Y'all, y'all like this, y'all back there. I'm gonna do, bro, I'm gonna do.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman O'Reilly. Uh, Councilwoman Simmons?
Okay, I just have a couple of things to add. Getting back to the litter. In the past few years, there's only been a handful, I say handful, I mean like two or four, and I remember exactly, but only a handful of tickets written in the city of Bogalusa for litter that has come to city court. That's it, a handful. So I'm hoping with our new chair that he can start implementing, enforcing this litter ordinance to where, you know, once we start taking in these people and they're seeing those are consequence, maybe not put back in some of the litter. Bottom line there, you've got to start showing pride in your home and your city. If you're rolling, rolling down the street, and you're rolling down the limit, and you're tossing your trash out, thinking somebody's coming behind you to pick it up, you're not showing pride in your home and your city. It starts with you. Second thing, school is back in session throughout the parish. Please be mindful of the hall clusters and the school zones, and the students walking. If you see a bus that's flashing their lights, they're picking up or dropping off students. You need to stop. You do not want their child to be hurt, because you did not stop for the bus. Last thing, thank you all for coming. I would, I hope at some point, we can have a council meeting that is ran like a business meeting without all of the arguing and differing and craziness. Have a good night.
Right, next, have the Councilwoman speak.
I just want to thank you everybody for coming out tonight, and, um, just thank everybody who took the time to speak, no matter if it was, um, constructive criticism, or criticism, or, um, you weighing it back on your shoulder. Um, but I was voted here not for the money, to work for y'all, and I will continue to, with the necessary for the citizens. I am your councilwoman at large. If you have any concerns that you feel that I would be of great assistance to you, my contact number is 985-570-7145. Over the past year, we have lost a paramour of Bogalusa. Over time, or in, a lady who was a peacemaker, who stood beside her husband for the deacon's other fence. She has passed away, Mrs. Her funeral services will be held this Friday at Bethlehem Baptist Church. She leaves a long legacy behind. I ask that you comfort her daughter and family and, and sons at this time and grandkids, and just continue to pray for those who are bereathing it at this time, for Ms. Penny and her family. It's them today, it can be us today. Also, we have Mr. and Mrs. Lockhart, who's celebrating one year of services of doing business here. They're located at 709 East... They're located at seven oh nine East Fourth Street. And when I tell y'all that this husband and wife, volunteers, they give back, it's more than a barroom there. It's a place where you can go and receive love. She donated food, clothes, et cetera, not only to the kids in town, but also to the elderly. She helps get the homeless place, and for that, I would like to commend them for celebrating one year of business. Thank you to Mr. May for allowing them to operate. Thank you for all that you do to give back, to take your time, to just talk to the youth boys that I have saw you talking to. I wanna commend you for that. Also, August the twenty-fourth, from ten o'clock to three thirty, at the Bogalusa Cult Club, Ms. Camille Daniels and her team will be hosting a day of action. Um, the equal justice USDA will be out, and I'm just asking along with myself, even if you're running late, it's okay, please make sure that we go out to, um, help her. She's doing great things in the city, and she's trying to get the city involved. And I had the opportunity on today to tell her, no matter what people say, no matter they tell you, I said something, you have to look over the naysayers. Because we're never gonna get anywhere by pulling each other back. You have to do what's right, when it's right, for the right. I hope that catch someone's attention. Also, Mr. Joel, even though you said you wasn't speaking about the council, but I do know that Ms. Gloria and I have personally worked hard to get the limbs cut down from the tree. And you have been complaining about it. I myself came out in the pouring rain to make sure, even though the guys did so much, and after I pulled off, they lived right behind me. But it's the fact that I can't, it's the fact that we caught. And I don't want you to think no one sits up here and our work is gonna go away, because like, Mr. Oriz, Pastor Oriz stated, we go above and beyond. Even if we have to print what the councilperson's job duties are, are, we don't mind doing that, because I know, I can speak for Tamira. It doesn't matter if you need a ride, it doesn't matter. If I gotta come clean your ditch, if you call me, I may be late, but I ain't coming. I don't do it for the money. I do it because it's in my heart. Also, to Mr. Joel, I wanna thank you and the community actually, because when I call, if anyone needs a ride, no matter what time of year, if he don't come himself, he will get someone out of his organization to come and help persons who need a ride. Be it, be it Bogalusa, Baton Rouge, or like he said, he didn't much know on the other side of pound that, hide, that a place even exist. But he had the opportunity to minister to a young man as he drove him back home. We have to have more people to be more believers, not wanting to stand in the spotlight. And that's why I commend Mr. Aron, who doesn't even have any kids, who's taking up the time to dedicate his path. And I'm not here to go back and forth between you and the mayor, 'cause that's something personal, I personally don't care. But I do know that the mayor's young, he ran part of his campaign on helping the youth, and that he has done, which caught my attention with him. I don't know much about you, Mr. Aron, but I do know you don't have any kids, and you have caught my attention by being young as well, by helping the youth. It does take a village, no matter what the circumstances may be. If we don't catch our youth and get them real then, then we go bad. People are dying, don't have an age to it. I work in a field where I see it happen every day. And it's okay if y'all feel, people in general, citizens feel, that the campaign isn't doing anything. That's okay, as long as we know that we're doing, and we're trying our best, that's all that matters. And I'm gonna stand on this, you voted me in to do a job for you, and I feel that I do go above and beyond. And I thank everybody that's funding y'all for the opportunity. If you voted for me or if you didn't, I appreciate you. When you stop me wherever I may be and say thank you, or you stop and say, well, Ms. Smith, you can do this a little bit better. I thank you for that. I wanna thank everybody that's here, everybody that's listening. Continue to pray for one another, let's lift each other up and pray. Now, I don't proclaim to be a minister, but we're all missionaries. And I don't think no one here could disagree that we're not missionaries. Because the Lord has put us here for a reason, and a season, and when that feeling has been fulfilled, we're gonna pass away. So I ask everybody, what are you leaving behind? What is your legacy? Who would you like to be reminded of? Thank y'all for y'all time.
Uh, Council Kate.
Yes, uh, I wanna thank everyone for coming out to our meeting this evening. And it does take all of us, with these children, from administration, from the mayor, to our administration, to the council. Our children needs, they don't, they don't have time for us, we have to set the example for our children. You know, in, in the best way. Anyone that can help our children, we need them. We need our children to be helped. I would like to say, uh, to the bereaved families, as well as, uh, the sick and sheltered families. Fam, a family needs all of our prayers. Prayers to the Douglas family. Prayers to our councilwoman, Amelia Graham, which lost her son. Prayers to the Hicks family. Prayers to the Ford family, Ms. Redd. But Mother Hicks, she was a great woman, she was a kind woman. And let's just, please, keep that family up and going, they're, they're really going through it. Uh, Mother Hicks participated in one hundred and five march from Bogalusa to Baton Rouge, and her and her husband were one. So, she should be recognized as one, with her works, as a humanitarian throughout Bogalusa, and throughout the world, actually. I would talk a little bit about the litter. Litter, we do need to get a grip on it. I would be looking at some of the ordinances on litter, maybe some of those ordinances updated as far as the, the amount, the pay, and the enforcement. We have to have enforcement with, with our litter. You know, every year, I'm gonna clean up that. Start out with district aid cleaning, start out with the, the cemetery cleanup. And we can do it, we have to keep influencing one another, and we have to keep encouraging one another. And I would like to finally say, uh, about contacting our public works. I will be getting with you, Mr. Patterson, um, there's a, a huge smell of poppers for us again, nine hundred o'clock. And, uh, I will be getting with you, we send it to the, uh, the workers, it's, it's kinda humid. But I knew you had told a couple of months ago that you had worked in the area. So the sewage, the sewage is really bad. Finally, on the, uh, the, the actual races. See, I got my, I got my, anybody wanna see, see my little two hundred fifty-five dollar check? Every two weeks, I, I nod for the money. Never been for the money, whether you know it or not. But, uh, let's keep you doing your prayers, please. Let's, we, we, excuse me, Mr. Joel.
I'm sorry, she has my fashion on, I have to, Mr. Miller. That's my reminder.
Thank you. Yeah, let's, let's keep you doing your prayers, please, we, we have to. Uh, wanna thank everybody, council tonight, administration, the mayor, thank you all. And everyone, you're safe, going home, please, thank you.
Thank you, Council Kate. I wanted to say something real briefly about, um, remember all those that were missing tonight in your prayers from here tonight, that are lost loved ones, that lives, is hidden long gone. Uh, I lost a dog off war in Germany, I lost my niece assisted by rosters. I can hopefully talk about that, because I'm not by leaving her up, but it's all replaced and everything, and my sister is in information. She suffered twenty-three years of that. I will be attending her memorial service, this is the wild literature event, uh, memorial service on August twenty-fourth, so I can take my disabled mother to the event, okay? And, uh, probably more, I wanna address one other thing, too. The council goes above and beyond. We did file a work order, the I work queue, that is called a work order request. A request, not a demand, to anywhere, a request on behalf of the citizens to get these things done, and they have to be done within guidelines of the budget. These work order requests sometimes are about potholes, whatever. Now, street light outlets, don't go through, you can call in a street light outlet, or call us, we'll go grab the street light and get that, uh, that street light back in service, we're paying to that street light, whether it's working or not. So, give us a ring, give us a buzz, I maintain a separate call line for city council. So all that's done, me personally, and I work two other jobs, just about everybody up here, works two or three other jobs, and doing those other things besides city council. Uh, I wish we could be full-time, go to every single event that Baton Rouge had off, but it's next to nearly impossible to do it on the, you know, our, our other jobs are a priority, but we do enjoy serving our constituents. And I, and I remember the day that I was one, and I, I think about my constituents every day, my home has been very busy. People calling me about potholes and everything, now's the time to break potholes. Don't wait until December was cold and chilly to try to shoot a pothole, 'cause that stuff's gonna come out back out. So, uh, also, we are aware of the sewer devastation issues, we are aware of that. So, uh, the council is very worried, we're, we're constantly in communication with public works, uh, you know, and they do give us an update and all that. We stay out of everybody, I do not stay out of the way. If I got a question, I would meet with the mayor, if it's emergency or something, I'll let, let the mayor. And I will tell you something, that our communication has been greatly improved between us and the mayor. Uh, he's bringing us up to speed on some things, and we're telling him about some things. So, um, let's all work together as a family, or attempt to. I know some, uh, every family has some people that gets kinda wild sometimes. So, be much in prayer for our city, and those who have lost loved ones, all, to all families. Uh, at this time, I wanna thank you very much. Our next council meeting will be Tuesday, August the twentieth, at five forty P M.
And, and Mr. Joel is right, um, I did lose a family member, I did come a range of ticket to emotion, but we share a pain. It's been a dear family member of mine, and a doctor family member of mine, but mainly, mostly she's gonna be missed, because every school year, she checks on the kids on May eighth and sixth to make sure that those kids have shoes, socks, or jackets when it's cold. And, and that by itself is a big role for her to do. And also, we do have persons here who are opening up businesses in town. The city is trying, I don't want nobody to be discredited. We have four brothers, it's looking very, very well, everything is looking just great. Um, and the new center by Zest, so that y'all haven't had the opportunity. Everything is fresh in paint, it looks clean, the landscape looks much, much better. It's well-lit over there, it's light everywhere now, it's no longer dark. And, um, I just wanna thank, um, Mr. Brian Jinko and his brothers for that, leaving in his brother's legacy and memory as well, and for everyone who has opened up a business. And I also wanted to say, I see in this message from the mayor, where it says, anyone craving pancakes at two A M? And that's one of my favorites, mayor, so yes, I am. And I just wanna tell everybody, um, let's just continue to lift everybody up, continue to pray for them, and I don't mean pray on them, I mean pray. And I wanted to say this, 'cause like I said earlier, today is a promise, but Mr. Tobias said something very dear. If you're gonna do for one, you do for all. And we all have to do better, we all have room for growth, and we all have room to do better, even I myself. But I wanted to thank you, Tobias, because we agree or disagree, but when you be on point, you be on point. So, I just wanna continue to, to tell everybody, and I know y'all ready to go, to just continue to lift each other up. And, you know, we know you feel people, that doesn't go unnoticed, because one thing, God is always, he's always in control of any missile, air situation. So before we dismiss, let's remember to pray for the bereaved families, and keep each other lifted and praying.
At this time, we have someone from administration, Ms. Shyne Collins, she's our, um, city.
Shyne.
Shyne Collins.
Give you a brief example, I just wanna know this about this, uh, cemetery plot. Okay, you guys purchased the cemetery plot, so it's up to you to keep your plot there. We don't maintain personal plots, we maintain around the cemetery, not your personal plot. Now, if you, we survey your plot one time. Now, it's up to you, if you don't know where your plot is, that's not the city's responsibility to just survey it twice. But we would be glad to help you and worry for you, so it's right, so you can come see me tomorrow, and I try to get some healthy pieces of plots, okay, I mean, city will your plots, okay? Okay, thank you.
Alright, that concludes our meeting, our next meeting will be, uh, August the twentieth, at the final of the council, we'll thank y'all very much.